Thank you for coming to what I think is a very important town council meeting. It's our annual shadow meeting and I think everyone knows that this is my favorite meeting of the year and you will see why. First, I want to thank Joshua and Sarah from Community Media Center for being here tonight and also working with Councilman Paulsgrove to get the sound system so that everybody can hear and then also on the taking, everyone can hear. The reason why we do this, one of the reasons, other than have fun and educational and informational for students and the youth of our community, is that the Maryland Municipal League that we belong to and represents 157 municipalities in the state of Maryland has a program and it's the Boehner Town Program and there's certain requirements. November is Municipal Government Works Month and this is one of the things that we do to meet the requirements for the month of November. The students are from Springdale Preparatory School and Northwest Middle School in Tonti Town. And I have the pleasure of introducing someone that was very helpful this year, stepped in after another teacher had moved over to North Carroll, I believe. So Ms. Jennifer Borsak, if you would like to say a few words and thank you for your assistance tonight.
Good evening. I'm very excited to have some of my students here this evening and also to be working Springdale Prep for the first time this year. And thank you all for having us tonight. And I reached out to Mayor Ruth and some of the other council members because some of my students are, were, were, were working on a project called Why Is Government Important? Why, Why Study Government? And they had to interview five community members at different levels in the community. And one of the people that they had reached out to was someone who was a politician. So we reached out to local politicians and so that's why many of my students are here tonight, because they reached out to local community members, business owners and so forth, but then also local politicians. So I want to thank all the council members here today and Mayor Ruth for also having us this evening. And I'm glad it's bringing history and politics to life for our students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to let you know, they weren't just chosen out of the blue. They had to fill out a five-question questionnaire and more or less an essay and they were the best this year that I've ever seen. It was tough to pick out the mayor, but Michael here did an outstanding job and he deserves that title. Hopefully others will see the importance of these meetings and also get involved, not only for one meeting out of the year, but to get involved in their communities throughout the year and hopefully for the rest of their life. At this time, I'd like for everyone to join me in a moment of silence at the passing of Tonti Town City Manager, Henry Hine. If you would bow your heads. Thank you.
I call the November 2018 New Windsor Town Council Meeting to order. Will everybody please stand and join me with, with me in signing the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically and will be followed with an agenda. Anyone who wish to have a matter placed on the agenda needed to submit the topic to the mayor in writing by the last Wednesday of the month. By the close of the Business Day, which is 3:00 PM, these items will be received for approval. Anyone wishing to speak during residence concern should sign their name on the sign-up sheet, which is on the table by the town manager.
At this time, we're gonna go and introduce a few of our local businesses. In the month of November, for the last probably close to ten years, we have been, for the last, for the last ten years, we've been introducing our businesses and recognizing them for the years of service here in New Windsor. We have six businesses to be recognized tonight and unfortunately, not everyone's able to be here, but we will recognize them at any December meeting. For five years is Uncle Matty's Eatery and I don't see anyone from Uncle Matty's. Hopefully, he's too busy serving meals and taking food down at Uncle Matty's. It is one of the best restaurants around. For five years, Huffman, and I'll call Debbie to come on up, there's Debbie there, she is, Huffman Geological Services, the mayor and council recognizes you for five years of service, November 7, 2018. And if you'd like to have a few words?
He needs a little bit of hair. No one say anything about being a speechwriter, three words. So, started my business five years ago, been living in town for 24 years and I do geological services part-time. It's been a passion of mine since I was a kid to learn about family history and to now help other people learn about their own family history. So, I'm really, I can't believe it's been five years actually, so I'm delighted to accept this honor and New Windsor's a wonderful place and I'm happy to be living here and looking forward to retiring here too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Phil, if you'd like to come up front? The mayor and council recognizes New Windsor Family Dynasty for their 15 years of service, November 7, 2018.
It's hard to believe, I've been here for 15 years, been a minister 24 years, and I'm gonna be 50 this March, which time really seems to march on. But I'm grateful for my patients who give me an opportunity to live up to my mission, which is you don't suffer, look up her. I'm sorry, you think we'll get my name, right? But I really love their acts in here and I'm grateful for the acceptance and for the patients to see me and of course, we're always welcoming new patients and I intend to stay here for as long as you'll have and so thank you very much.
Pretty sure.
Not that much.
Lisa?
The mayor and council recognizes Little New Daycare for their 15 years of service, November 7, 2018.
I'm not used to speaking in front of everybody, usually taking care of little ones. I've been at New Windsor 25 years, love the town, volunteer for our house when I can. If anybody knows anybody that needs daycare, please send it my way. This has been a very trying year, my enrollment is really down and I'm working two part-time jobs on top of watching kids during the day. So, if anybody's looking for daycare, please send it my way, but I love New Windsor. So, thank you very much.
So, it's all about networking sometimes, so if you know some little ones, you know where to go. And I don't see Larry here, I don't think he can make it, Larry Coverman, but the mayor and council recognizes Coverman Air Conditioning and Instruction for their 25 years of service, November 7, 2018. And Jay Gallow had another commitment tonight, he wasn't able to be here, but the mayor and council recognizes Jack Jay Gallow, Duke Law Office, for their 25 years of service, November 7, 2018. But he said he will be here at any December meeting.
Before you are the minutes from the October 3, 2018 Town Council Meeting, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written? Do I hear a second? Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay. We should start a slide reading. Okay. Read that, those names in there?
There is a motion by council member Maestros, seconded by council member Walters, to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 Those who oppose say no. Motion passes and the minutes have been approved. Reports, council committees, council, council, go to tab four in your books, Public Works, council mother, council member Heather Lapp, any comments or questions? Oh crap.
October has been another busy month for the Public Works Crew. At the beginning of the month, the Public Works Crew was busy setting up for the successful music on the main event. This included cleaning the streets and marking the vendor spaces on Main Street. They also erected a fence at the Main Street Lot for the refreshment area. On the day of the event, they set up the road barricades to block the street, helped erect the band stage, and put up the signs for the parking lot and detour routes. As usual, October marks the end of the mowing season and yard waste pickup. Also, as a result of the changing seasons, the Public Works Crew winterized the Lions Club Park to ensure it will be ready for usage next spring. Since the final mowing has been completed, the Public Works Crew has transitioned to leaf collection, which will continue through the first week of December. Refer to the town newsletter for the leaf crib side pickup schedule. Please remember, leaves should not be raked into the gutter during inclement weather, rain, snow, or sleet, as this creates blockage of the storm drainage system. The last Saturday October, of October was the town's both trash day. Per the vehicle count, it is estimated that at least 60 town residents took advantage and despite the rain, filled four dumpsters. The Public Works Crew spent the morning onsite to help unload the items. As I'm sure you know, the dumpsters were available at the Public Works Facility located on Gear Lane and were for the collection of items that are typically too large to go in the regular trash. The Public Works Crew also helped address the speeding concerns along Church Street and Lambert Avenue. They installed state highway-sized stop signs to increase visibility. The signage size increased from 24 to 30 inches. They also raised all signs to the standard seven-foot height. This increases visibility and allows a safer passage for pedestrians on the sidewalks. I'm sure you saw the veteran banners hanging in town. The Public Works Crew was responsible for installing the brackets, hardware, and hanging the banners. Lastly, as we move towards winter weather, the Public Works Crew would like to remind everyone to obey the parking prohibition on snow emergency routes. Vehicles parked in prohibited areas during snow emergencies create a hazardous situation for the crew and hinder their snow removal efforts. Please plan ahead and find a suitable place to park your vehicle before the snow falls this year.
Any comments or questions for council member Lapp?
Seems like the Public Works Crew is involved in everything around town. In a nutshell, can you tell the attendees the main benefit the Public Works Crew provides to the town?
Basically, the mission of the Public Works Crew is to enhance the quality of life for all of the residents of the town by providing the vital services the public depends upon.
Water and Sewer, council member Davis Maestros.
We have several items to share with you this evening. First, we call your attention to the town's drinking water quality report. The town's water supply is tested annually as required by the Environmental Protection Agency and the Safe Drinking Water Act. Our Environmental Protection Agency and Safe Drinking Water Act, um, our water and sewer operation, Maryland Environmental Service, provides a report which basically states that New Windsor's drinking water is well within the prescribed maximum limits of certain containments. In most cases, the measured level of containments is less than half of the safe allowable level and some are only a fraction of the maximum. We take comfort in knowledge that New Windsor's water is safe and actually tastes pretty good. I, I propose a toast to New Windsor's drinking water. The full report for the 20, the year 2017 can be found on the town's website on page four of the latest documents. We had also have a few copies here at the front table. Our second item, at, at the present time, all water and sewer systems are functioning, are functioning properly. However, due to the angling of all the underground water and sewer pipes, the, for leaks or failure and ongoing concern, we have dealt with at least five emergency situations in the past year, which we have needed to dig up sections of streets in order to repair water, water line leaks, one of which was a real gusher. We share this sim, or supply to make you aware that at any time, anywhere in town, you may see crews working in the streets, sometimes in less than favorable conditions in order to keep the water flowing. We are grateful to town staff and the outside contractors that get down dirty to provide the services that we sometimes take for granted. The last item is a repeat from two years. In November, council meetings will come to you as a public service. Disposable or flushable wipes and, and the problem, they continue to create a sewer system for several year, years. We have been dealing with clogs and block, blockages in the town sanitary sewer system, pipes and pumps as a result of the disposable or flushing of so-called disposable towel wipes or, while many of these household products are labeled disposable and some even labeled flushable. They do not break down or disintegrate quickly, although to pass through the system without causing problems, disposable does not mean flushable and flushable is usually the misbeeling of manufacturers. Please do not flush any type of wipes, towels, or, or other cleaning products into the system. The public service announcement reads like this, no wipes down the pipes. Say it with me now. No wipes down the pipes. Thank you for your cooperation.
Any comments or questions for council member Maestro, Maestros? What is the source of our drinking water?
Well, your mayor, it is right here. New Windsor's water present comes from two wells, one here in town on Hillside Drive and one about three and a half miles from here on Deanings Road and a spring on Bow, Bowrox Road. We also have other sources on standby that we could be developed should the need arise. The New Windsor is, is a relatively comfortable position in regards to water and supply. However, the water that comes to us from the Deanings Road well will have mainspring earned Bow, Bow socks in the being of conveyed through an underground pipeline that is well over 100 years old and it is unbearable to failure that we talked about earlier.
Public Safety, council member Francesca Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer to the county deputy for the monthly report. If you have been following the national news lately, you would have learned that throughout the country, there has been an increase in drivers failing to obey school bus flashing signals. These cases have often ended in tragic circumstances. I'm sure nobody would want to harm a child by violating the law. People should be aware that these violations can be very costly, both personally and financially. Please be aware that there are numerous school buses on the roads in our town and county at any given time. Slow your speed and keep a close eye out for flashing yellow and red lights on buses. Stop and wait for children to safely exit the roadway and make sure the bus has turned off the lights and is pulling away. The minute or so this takes could save a life. I know I speak for all my friends when I say, we just want to have a safe way to and from school. My fellow students and I want a chance to learn and grow up to be successful contributing members to our community. Help us to arrive alive. We are also entering into the holiday season. This time of year can bring an increase in property crimes such as theft. Be very careful when coming and going from your home. Lock your doors and windows, leave lights on or use a timer. Let your neighbors and friends know if you will be away so they can keep an eye on your property. The northern part of the county has been rash of cars being broken into. These are known as smash and grabs. These thief breaks, the, the thief breaks into the car by unlocked doors or by breaking windows and steals property. So be very careful. I also want to remind folks that since we recently changed our clocks back, it's time to check our smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Even if you have the lifetime battery type or an electric type, it's always nice to test them. You should also check to make sure your fire extinguishers are properly charged and your flashlight has fresh batteries. You should have a family fire escape plan in the case of a fire. This should include that route to take, to take when leaving your house and also a meeting placed to ensure that every person was able to safely evacuate the house. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for council member Walters? What can residents do to protect their vehicles from becoming a target for theft?
Make sure there are no valuables left in your car, especially in plain sight. These include money, cell phones, electronic devices and such. Always lock your doors, close your windows, and if your car is equipped with an alarm system, make sure it is set. Park in a well-lit area or have a motion detectors on your outside, on the outside of your house. Don't leave your car running while you go into a store or leave it warm up in the driveway. Report any suspicious persons to, you see in your neighborhood to your local law enforcement
Economic Development, council, council member Spencer Conaway.
The Economic Development attended and presented New Windsor at the Human Service Programs, HSP, of Carroll County's October Executive Committee and Board Meetings. HSP is in the process of hiring a new executive director and is currently reviewing applications and resumes. HSP is also restarting its capital campaign, campaign to purchase a building on Carroll Street Westminster in order to improve its shelter and homeless centers. They also attended and/or assisted with the, with the following of the Public Information, Information Compliance Board Meeting, the Preservation Maryland Benefit on October 25th, along with mayor and Mrs. Ruth and councilwoman, councilman and Mrs. Hoffman, the music and the music on the main, on the main event on October 6th. They also attended the Carroll County Downtown's, Downtown's Economic Development Group Meetings. The group is working on its annual Small Business Saturday Shopping Passport Program. This is the third year for this program, which encourages, which encourages shoppers to shop small and shop at local Carroll County businesses for the week following Black Friday, which is November 24th through December 2nd. On December 7th, the winners will, will be picked for $20, for $20, $100 gift cards that may be used, that may be used any of the, of the 172 participating Carroll County businesses. Five New Windsor businesses are participating. The program is supported by a grant from tourism and is free for the participating businesses. Anyone wanting to, wanting more information about the passport program should contact Councilwoman Schultz. Economic Development ordered the American Express Free Small Business Saturday Promotional Items and will distribute these to local businesses in time for the Shop Small Passport Promotion. The local promotional, promotional video project between Carroll, Carroll Media Center and the Carroll County Downtown's group is back on track, so I will have an update on its status next month. In order to promote New Windsor, a wreath will be submitted to the Carroll County Festival of Wreaths event with the theme, A Weekend in New Windsor. And donations have been received and are items purchased from so far seven New Windsor businesses, organizations, and/or artists.
Any comments or questions for council member Conaway? What is a small business, what is Small Business Saturday?
Small Business Saturday is held on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so this year, November 24th, and is a counterpart to Black Friday and Cyber Monday, which highlight big stores and online shopping. Instead, instead, Small Business Saturdays encourages shop, shop, holiday shoppers to shop at small local businesses.
Community Ed Hansmuth.
Last year, at this meeting of the town council, we talked about New Windsor Saves the Planet, a Facebook campaign to increase recycling and reduce waste. This year, thanks to New Windsor's participation in a pilot pay-to-throw trash program, we actually have the chance to make real changes. The program began with the first trash pickup in November, day before yesterday, and it looks like most people use their orange pay-to-throw trash bags to real, and really filled up their recycling bins. As the first and so far only town in Carroll County to participate in the pilot program, New Windsor will be the leader in the green practices and will be the example for the rest of the county, the state, and hopefully the entire country. Here's what you need to know. All of your garbage should be All of your garbage should be in orange trash bags for pickup. They come in two sizes, large and small, and you can buy them at Seven-Eleven. You can stuff the bags directly with trash or put regular garbage bags in the orange bags. You can either put the orange bags on the curb for Tuesday morning pickup or in your regular garbage bin. You can put out as many orange bags as you want. It is expected, however, that once the program is underway, your garbage output will be significantly reduced. You want to continue to put your recycling out in the blue bins, any size, and as many bins as you want. Keeping the recyclables out of the trash, you will keep the cost of your orange bags lower. Some of the things you can recycle are cereal and other paperboard boxes, paper bags, newspapers, gift wraps, junk mail, office paper, notebook paper, magazines and catalogs, paper books, aluminum, tin steel cans, containers, and foil, glass jars and bottles, plastic, plastic tubes, and milk cartons. Don't recycle plastic grocery bags. You can drop them off at any grocery store instead. Batteries, styrofoam, electronics, food whister, ceramics or dishes, motor oil containers, clamshell containers, light bulbs, window glass or mirrors. When the pilot program is concluded, the town will evaluate the results to determine whether the program should be continued. The results and next step will be discussed at Town Council meetings. If you want your voice heard and ideas considered, please come. We'll announce the meetings, of course, and the agenda of each well in advance. Dog waste. Another way to enhance our community is to go out to all you dog owners and walk in town. And dog walkers in town. Please remember to bring poop bags on your walk and clean up after your dog. Nobody wants dog poop. Their dog or someone else's, on their lawn, in their garden, or in New Windsor's public spaces. Scoop that poop.
Any comments or questions for Councilmember Lanza? What can young people do to make New Windsor a better place to live in?
That's not the question.
Oh, my God.
I'll ask the question.
We got it right here. That was last year, my fault. What happened?
What happens when residents put their trash out in our- in regular bags?
The people from Waste Zero will monitor the bags and remind people to use the right ones after a week or two. Trash in ordinary bags will be left on the curb. And they'll be sorry.
Got all kinds of phrases this night to take home with you. First, on the mayor's report, I want to begin by talking about Music on the Main. You heard about it a little bit earlier. This is our third year- this was our third year back on October sixth. It's the first Saturday in October. And the crowd was filled- the streets were filled the entire day. We had great music, great food. I talked to all the vendors, all the food vendors, all the craft vendors, and they all said that they all made money and they were extremely happy. Just to let you know, this was started three years ago to highlight, showcase our businesses, our organizations, and our churches here in town, and it's grown every year. And I want to thank the entire council for their support, helping setting up, tearing down, planning it throughout the year. Also, the Fire Department Chief Coe back here. We could not have this event without the Fire Department. And we get their tables, chairs, trash cans, stage, and manpower and woman power. So it's just a very well-run and successful community event where the community really does come together. Also, I'm very proud to have been part of the military banners that are up. I believe we have eight or nine up right now, and we have three that are still in production. This is going on in Tonty Town and Union Bridge and now New Windsor this month. The military banners will be up the entire month of November. The family has the option of keeping the banner or letting the town keep it, and then we will display those every May and every November. So, and then on top of that, I know it's short notice, but this Sunday at three o'clock in front of the War Memorial on High Street, we'll have a real brief dedication of the banners. Anyone is welcome, and it will be open to the public, of course, but it also will be those that are involved with the banners, either themselves that served or a family member that served and that they're honoring, will have a few moments to express their feelings about what the banner program means to them and also what their service to this country meant as well. So hopefully, Sunday at three o'clock, a little Memorial Day and banner dedication ceremony. Along with Town Manager Di, we went to the Maryland Department of Transportation or MDOT pre-trip, pre-tour meeting last month, and tomorrow we'll be going to the actual MDOT tour. It's where the Secretary of Transportation goes around the county- around the state, and tomorrow will be Carroll County's Day. The delegation will be there, the county commissioners, different municipalities, of course, will be there, and we will be talking about our street skate project. For those that don't know, we've been working on the street skate project since two thousand and thirteen with State Highway Administration, and for five years, there was no guarantee that they had the funding for it. However, they always assured us that that would not be a problem, and we- our responsibilities were to take care of the sewer and water lines, which we've taken care of the sewer line, and we're in the process of designing a new water line on Main Street and High Street. And then about three, four months ago, the state said because of a grant application was turned down, a Tiger Grant, it's a federal grant for street repairs and projects, that there's no funding for our street skate project. Well, we are going to do everything we can to change that around. It's still two or three years away, budget years for the state to come up with the money, but we're doing everything we can, and we will express that to the Secretary of Transportation tomorrow. As you heard, Councilwoman Schultz and Councilman Huffman and I and our spouses went down to Preservation Maryland's Phoenix Rising fundraiser down in Baltimore. And last year, we were one of the six to fix projects through Maryland Preservation Maryland, and they brought out a contractor that did a survey on the foundation and then also did a site plan for us through Street Sense. Just went blank on the contractors. They'll come to me in a little bit, but the contractor was there, Lewis Contractors was there, and Martha from Lewis Contractors came up to us and we were talking and just kind of- that light bulb thing went off, and I said, "Would Lewis Contractors be willing to refurbish one room at Dealman Inn?" So I, you know, I think we might be able to do that. Wouldn't be till June of next year, so that got me thinking, maybe other contractors that have been working with the town, electrical, I know someone in town that takes care of lead paint and asbestos, so maybe we can get two or three rooms refurbished at basically no cost to the town. So stay tuned on that. But it was very well-run organization and a great event that night and very prosperous for us hopefully in the next year. Also, as I say this, Master Deputy Calusi just walked in here. He's been on duty during the day, and I had the honor and privilege of participating in a ride-along on Halloween night. And we went through Union Bridge and New Windsor, and he erased a few people off his Christmas card list because there was a few people that didn't know how to stop at stop signs and didn't know how to stay under the speed limit. So it was very informational for me, and I highly recommend the rest of the council and staff to take an opportunity to ride along with Master Deputy Calusi. In closing, I think there was a couple others, my reports in under Tab Five, if you want to look at that, it's quite lengthy this month. We've been working, and you'll hear a little bit more from our Town Manager about the street skate project and also College Avenue and Blue Ridge Project. Just in closing, I want to extend my greatest appreciation for the Town Council and all that they do that sometimes is not known by the residents in New Windsor and the sacrifices they make to make this town a better place in which to live. Our decisions are not always popular, but we always do what we feel is in best interest to the town today, tomorrow, and for future generations. And also tonight, I forgot to thank the parents of the shadows tonight for their support and their guidance throughout this entire adventure. So thank you. You want to ask me if there's any questions for Mayor's report? Any questions on my report? Thank you.
Mr. Ducky, Master Ducky, Brian Calusi.
President, I apologize for being late. Duty called out. With that, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, between the dates of October first and October thirty-first, responded to fifty-three calls for service, which only four required a report, which was as follows. Thank you. On October fourth, at approximately seven thirty-four PM, deputies responded to the one-hundred block of Springdale Avenue in reference to assisting the Fire Department with a cardiac arrest. Upon arrival, it was learned that an elderly patient was in fact deceased. No signs of foul play were observed, and the case was closed. On October sixteenth, at approximately eight fifty PM, deputies responded to the four-hundred block of Church Street in reference to a missing adult. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the missing person failed to return home and failed to answer their phone. It was learned that the subject was a recovering addict who had relapsed. After a day, the subject was located in Westminster, and the case was closed. On October twenty-fourth, at approximately two forty-two PM, deputies responded to the one-hundred block of Main Street in reference to a robbery. Upon arrival, it was learned that the known suspect aimed a BB gun at the victim and demanded marijuana. Victim advised they did not have marijuana, at which time the suspect cocked the weapon, then aimed the weapon towards the victim and demanded them to provide them their marijuana again. Victim refused, at which time the suspect fled the residence. Suspect was later located and arrested, and the case was closed by arrest. On October twenty-eighth, at approximately three twenty-seven PM, deputies responded to the twenty-eight hundred block of New Windsor Road in reference to a malicious destruction of property. Upon arrival, deputies learned that an unknown suspect had tossed a vehicle alternator at a windshield parked- at a vehicle parked along the street, causing the window to be broken. At this time, the suspects have been developed, and the case is still under investigation. Other news, the Sheriff's Office is participating in No Shave November to, once again, in order to raise awareness for prostate cancer. Deputies who are participating in the fundraiser will donate thirty dollars for the cost. Eighty-two members of the Sheriff's Office participated in fundraiser last year, raising two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. This year, the Police Academy recruits will also show their support by doing one squat for every dollar raised, up to a thousand dollars. They will also be making a donation as a class, so if you see any hairy deputies out there this month, now you know why. Also, the holiday season is quickly approaching, so if you're partaking in any holiday parties, please remember, drink responsible and designate a sober driver or designated driver. And also, the annual holiday tree lighting, which I know you guys probably have already discussed, will be held on December fifth, starting at six PM. There will be several pedestrian traffic at Town Square, so drivers are asked to use caution, and additional information will be coming later on. Other than that, that's all I got.
Any questions or comments for Master Deputy Calusi?
Good, thank you.
Fire Chief, Chief Tom Coe.
Good evening.
Evening.
First, those were fantastic fire safety tips that you gave. Very nice job. So the month of October was Fire- included Fire Prevention Week, so we were very excited to host the Elmer Wolf Elementary School's kindergarten for a field trip at the firehouse, which is always a great time for probably us as much as the kids. We engaged several civic groups in some fire prevention activities at the station, so that's always a fun time in October. For the month of October, we ran twenty-eight calls for fire rescue service. That brings us to a year-to-date total of two hundred ninety-three, and fifty-one calls for emergency medical services assistance brings us to a year-to-date total of five hundred and thirty-two. And the interesting thing apart about that is at this pace, we'll be twenty percent above our responses for last year, so it's been a pretty busy year this year. Most importantly, seasons are about to change, so we want everybody to take care of their alternate heating sources, make sure their chimneys are cleaned, and for everyone's comfort, we have been in contact with the North Pole to schedule our annual Santa Claus runs around town. So the Fire Department will be driving Santa Claus around on some dates that will be published on our website soon, so keep an eye out for that. That's all I have.
Wait a minute.
Are the fire hydrants taken care of for snow?
Absolutely. Actually, thanks to firefighter Vetri, who's here tonight. Our snow markers have been distributed, so if we get less than six feet of snow, we'll be able to see where the fire hydrants are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Chief Coe? Town Manager Taylor Miller, Tab Six.
Maryland Thirty-One High Street, Watermaine and Streetscape, no change. No change. A revised schedule was submitted on nine twenty-one eighteen. If all goes as planned, GMB will submit sixty-five percent plans beginning of December twenty eighteen. Final design by June-July of twenty nineteen. The end award contract and notice proceed November first, twenty nineteen. Updated cost estimates will be rendered at sixty-five percent in financial plans submission. Blue Ridge and College Avenue, the road improvement phase of the project. Pre-bid kickoff and field visit was held on nine twenty-eight eighteen. Eight contractors attend and purchase bid specification plans. Bid opening was held ten twenty-six eighteen at ten o'clock AM. Four birds received. You have copies of the bid tribulation sheet. All birds are well over the engineer's probable cost. Cost estimate. Mayor Rupe, Michael Reynolds, and the Town Manager Di talked with Cindy Stone, DHCD. Immediately after the bid opened to let her know, all birds came in high. Bids. Cindy directed us to the- us to contact the design engineer and get their input as to why bids were so high and provide copies of the bids for their review. A meeting was held with Scott Satchel, DHCD, Brian Hopkins, Aero Engineering, Mike Reynolds, Mayor Rupe, and Town Manager Di on Tuesday eleven-six to go over the bids. A letter will be sent to all four contractors who submitted bids requesting reevaluations of specific line items to see if bids can be lowered and be closer to grant limits. The letter will have a response deadline date.
Snyder's.
Snyder's submit. Mailer distribution expected this week or next. Town Attorney Michelle Oster and Town Manager Di met with developer Paul Town Attorney Michelle Oster and Town Manager Di met with Developer Paul Mueller 10/24/18 to go over final review of the Public Works Agreement, PWA. Town Manager Di reviewed the final draft and PWA was sent to Developer Paul Mueller for his final approval. 209 High Street, L-1 Building Purchase. The Sugars agreed to a two-document process to cover the agreements with the town. The first document would be an agreement prepared by Town Attorney Michael Oster, reviewed and approved by both parties, and recorded in Land Records of Carroll County. The agreement will run with the property and will cover the ingress and egress and regress estate.
Easement.
Easement and the relaxation of parking requirements for two spacers per unit. Twelve spaces required. Two 1.5 space per unit, nine spaces required. The second document would be a memorandum of understanding. The MOU would also be prepared by Attorney Oster reviewed, approved, and signed by both parties. The MOU between the town of, the town and Sugars will be, will cover the following items. And we, or the MOU between the town and the, the town agrees to provide one-time repaving of entire parking lot, stripping of nine parking spaces as a part of the new paving, maintenance of stripping as needed, approximately every five years, dumpsters for both town property at 209 High Street and the Sugars' property at 132 Street, snow removal of the first 45 inches.
Feet.
Oh, sorry, 45 feet in one, in, from spoiling dry for full width of Sugars' property. At 132 Church Street, approximately 35 feet. The, what did I say about?
There was one additional.
There was one additional request from the Sugars' that, and that was, could the one-time repaving be done at a later date? The Town Manager Di is okay with deferring the repaving to a later date, but a timeframe should be defined in the MOU.
Any questions or comments for Town Manager Miller? How many miles of town roads does the New Windsor Public, Public Works maintain?
8.22 miles.
Clerk Treasurer Trinity Sherfy, Tab 7.
Each of the following balances given as of October 31st, 2018. General Fund of the balance is $145,819.12. General Fund Capital Budget, the balance is $143,872. Enterprise Fund, the balance is $290,472.72. Enterprise Capital Reserves and 3Rs Fund, the balance is $272,989.68. Developer Fees, the balance is $729,696.37. Money Market Fund, the balance is $37,541.56. Lagoon Remediation, sorry, Remediation Fund, the balance is $199,817.41. Real Property Report. There are 11 properties for sale. There are eight properties in foreclosure process. Water and Sewer. First lay charge, first lay charge on water slash sewer billing will be assigned, will be assessed on November 8th, 2018. Audit. The FY18 audit has been finalized and all the necessary paperwork was submitted in the state of Maryland.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Sherfy? Is the position of Clerk Treasurer an elected or appointed position?
The position of the Clerk/Treasurer is appointed by the mayor with approval of the council. He or she shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and is the chief financial officer of the town.
Mr. Chad Green.
Good evening. Quick update, short update on what's going on out of New Windsor Quarry. The quarry is progressing. Rain certainly has not helped us in, at all this year, but we are hoped to be operational by mid-December. That is a little, you know, later than expected with our full transition by the first of the year. We have hired a contractor company called, by the name of Allen Myers to help us move some of our overburden, kind of help speed things up. And that's all I got.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Green? Old Business. 209 High Saint, L-1 Building Purchase. Town Manager Briefing and Update.
Okay, can refer to your town manager's report, but to add to that, the, the mayor and council have a briefing paper with financial and budget information to review. The public information meeting for the possible purchase of 209 High Street by the town of New Windsor will be held on Monday, November 19th, 2018 at 7:00 PM during the town council work session. So, just, I'm not going to go ahead and read the briefing paper. You all have that information as well as a spreadsheet with some financial information on it as well. Want me to just keep going?
Blue Ridge and College Avenue, Road Improvement Project, Town Manager Update.
Okay, again, Tiffany or Taylor covered the basics on the Blue Ridge College update. Again, you have a bid tabulation sheet from the four contractors who did bid, and then also some spreadsheets prepared by town, the engineer, Aero Engineering, and Mike Reynolds as well, showing the breakdown of those, of those different costs, line item costs by each of the contractors. So, as stated earlier, we're gonna, I'm going to be preparing a letter to all four of the contractors to see if they can fine-tune their, their bids to get within the grant, the limits of the grant.
There's what, 12 line items in the bid that? There's 12 line items in the bid that we want clarification. One thing that was extremely high was traffic management, where the only traffic management will be on the state highway, and that's going to be probably 5% to 10% of the whole total project.
Correct.
And that'll be when they have to lower College Avenue by Route 75, and then when they do work up at Blue Ridge Avenue and Main Street. And we, we estimated, our Aero Engineers estimated, I think, 20,000, and some of them, as you can see, are extremely high. And I don't know if they thought that they were going to have to have flaggers throughout the entire project, but my philosophy on traffic management is a sign, street closed or local traffic only at both ends, and you don't have to have a flagger. So, I'm not sure. We just want clarification. And there's other things like that, that three of the four bids might be all in the same ballpark, and then one bid was extremely high. So, we just want clarification and give them clarification of exactly, you know, one thing, you know, that when we put the bid out in the, or worked on the engineering of it, we had two trees. Well, one tree's already been taken down, so, you know, that, it's not a big, big difference, you know, probably about $1,000. But there's other things that have been taken care of that they don't, that aren't, don't have to be in the bid now since we've already done some things, so. But we're talking with Cindy Stone from Department of Housing Community Development, and she's going to do everything to keep this on track.
Thank you.
It's been a process. And if no one is familiar with the College Avenue and Blue Ridge Street project, it's a total reconstruction basically of the two streets. Going to have all-new ADA compliant sidewalk ramps, new curbs, retaining walls, and new paving. We already replaced the water line. We've already taken care of that. We're going to have new vaults.
Water laterals and sewer cleaners.
Laterals and cleanouts for all the sewers, sewer lines. So, I applied over a three-year period, got turned down the first year, the second year, and we received the grant the third year. It's about a, we estimate about an $800,000 project. The state approved to fund $673,000 of that, and the bids are a little bit high now. Part of that is because of hurricanes in the past year that just naturally increases construction costs up for materials and just overall construction. So, I really believe we can work with the state and make this happen. So, thank you, Gary, for all your work on this.
You're welcome. Next one. Future.
Future Pilot Program Ecology Services, Town Manager Update.
Okay, Way Zero was in New Windsor Wednesday, October 24th and Thursday, October 25th, and went door-to-door from 12 to 6:00 PM. Approximately less, less than half of the residents were home during those times, and an orange door hanger was left if no one answered the door with instructions on how and where to get packet information, which included a $35 gift card for 7-Eleven, one large starter bag, a program brochure, and composting information. The orange door hanger also stated in bold type that the town hall will be open on Saturday, October 27th, from 9:00 to 3:00. We had about 65 residents come to town hall on that Saturday for their packet pickup. So, again, I decided, made a decision to extend town hall hours last week and stayed open on Tuesday, the 30th, and Wednesday, the 31st until 6:00 PM in an effort to give the residents as much opportunity to get in and pick up their information, you know, and understanding regular town hours, 9:00 to 3:00 are not really conducive for, for residents who work or may have been out of town. Yesterday, November 6th, was the first trash pickup for the Pay As You Throw pilot program. As stated earlier, staff in County, staff from Carroll County and Solid Waste and Way Zero were in town to monitor and assist the ecology as they were going around. Approximately 55 to 60 residents did not use the orange bags, and if they didn't, one of the oops cards was left at the location with information, you know, reminding and stating basically, you know, "Next week, please make sure your trash is placed in an orange official bag before putting your trash curbside for collection. Trash that is not in the orange bags will not be collected after this week." So, that's just a little update on kind of where we were, the efforts we made to try to get the bags and information to everybody and where, and how the first, first week went. That's all I have on that.
Rental Ordinance, Town Manager Update.
Okay, the ordinance, rental ordinance was introduced at the October 3rd, 2018 town council meeting. Letters were sent to all landlords requesting attendance at the October 15th work session to discuss the rental ordinance. We had approximately 10 landlords attend that meeting. Per town code, we have to, we have up to 60 days to hold a public hearing and advertise in a newspaper after the ordinance is introduced. So, it was decided that we were going to hold the public hearing at the November 19th town council work session at 7:00 PM, and the ad has been placed in the Carroll County Times for that. That's all I have.
Any other new business?
Old business. Old business.
New business, new tractor purchase for Public Works, Town Manager Briefing.
This is in reference to a possible purchase of a new tractor for Public Works. The mayor and council have a briefing paper and spreadsheet with manufacturer's information in comparison for review. The Public Works tractor that we currently have is a 2008 Kubota L-5240 that was purchased in 2013. There have been many problems and costly repairs since the town purchased in 2013, mainly with the turbos failing and needed, needing replaced. There have been three turbo failures, that, three turbo failures since 2013, and to date we spent $6,130 in repairs. The first turbo repair was actually under warranty and did not cost the town any additional money. The second one, the prior town manager negotiated with, with Ripian to, to just charge the, just charge labor on that. And, and so that actually, that amount would have actually been about $1,500 to $2,000 higher. Currently, the tractor is into Ripian Equipment Company in Westminster for transmission shifting and solenoid problems. Ripian has another, has another $1,000 into the current repairs, which includes general service maintenance, but the repairs have not fixed the transmission problems. Ripian estimates an additional $2,766 to fix the transmission problem, and they cannot guarantee the work will solve the problem. And then, so this would bring the total current repair up to $3,766 and the total repair cost up to, close to $9,900 without a guarantee. So, based on that above history and the current problems, Wayne Myers, our Public Works supervisor and I decided to look into the purchase of a new tractor. Wayne has done a lot of very good work contacting and visiting the local tractor dealers, negotiating prices with three different dealers, and convincing, convincing Ripian to forgive the current $1,000 repair bill and coming up with new ideas on how to reduce the cost to purchase a new tractor. Wayne should be recommended for his hard work and very stingy and tough negotiating skills. He's, he's very good at it. Wayne has suggested that we sell our, our current skid loader and put that money towards the purchase of a new tractor. Public Works will not need the skid loader if we purchase a new tractor, and we have estimates from two of the three tractor manufacturers for nine, between a trade-in of 9,000 to 11,000 on the skid loader. We also have estimates ranging from 15,000 to 17,000 for the trade-in of our current And given the, given the history with our current tractor, I believe it's in the town's best interest to trade in both the tractor and the skid loader while they still have decent value and not chance spending another 37, almost $3,800 in the hope we don't have any more problems and purchase a new, a new Kubota M7, 7060 tractor from Ripian Equipment Company. After researching product information, compiling dealer specifications and offers, and relying on Wayne's experience, Wayne recommends the, to the town, that the town purchased the Kubota 7060 from Ripian. As town manager, I support Wayne's recommendation. So, again, please refer to the sheet for dealer information and the pricing. This is what you have in there.
Questions, comments?
So, I'd like to add that I did meet with Wayne and the Public Works crew to discuss the tractor purchase. I had concerns about purchasing another Kubota tractor since we are currently having problems with a Kubota tractor. Wayne told me that the Kubota tractor that we currently have was purchased used, so we do not know how that tractor was used before we.
Correct.
Got it for one thing. And secondly, the 7060 is a larger heavy-duty tractor than our current model, so he felt that purchasing a new one there, we would be better off than the John Deere or the Case that he also looked at, so I was in agreement with that. One thing I did talk to Wayne about was the fact that our current trailer that we have will not call as a tractor, so we would have to think. will not fall back into the tractor, so we would have to think about possibly getting a tra, a trailer, selling the trailer we have and putting it towards a new one. Wayne thought maybe it wasn't necessary to purchase a trailer for that tractor. The farthest it goes is out to the Denny Road site that he would be doing some excavating and thought that that was a driving distance in that tractor. So I guess that would be up for debate whether we need to do anything with the trailer or not. So I as well, as the Town Manager, do agree with Wayne's assessment and recommendations.
And there's, there's additional information, more detailed information in the, in the briefing that you all have. One of the reasons, another reason for going up in size with the tractor is to get away from what they call a hydrostatic transmission. I'm not a tractor expert, I rely on Wayne for that. But basically what that does is, is with the hydrostatic transmission, you're limited in, you're lifting capacity and moving forward simultaneously due to the hydraulic systems. Moving up to the, the size, you're getting into a more of a traditional gear-type transmission where the capability of lifting and move, and moving forward and back is, is not an issue.
Any other questions from the council?
I would just comment, I appreciate the work that Wayne and Dave, I don't know if you were involved in this or not, but the, appreciate the work that our Public Works crew has done on this. I also get excited when we're able to combine the uses of two pieces of equipment into one. That's, that's big in reducing one piece of rolling stock out there. So I appreciate the work we've done. I, I think this is the direction we need to go.
Would you like to make a motion? I make a motion.
I make a motion to purchase the tractor.
I second.
She made the second.
Be careful who you tackle Facebook, buddy. Purchases to kids.
We have a motion by Councilmember Maestros, second by Councilmember Conaway, to purchase a new Kubota M7060 tractor for $40,661.86 and trade in our Kubota L-5240, NCase 1845C skid loader for a final cost of $19,161.86. Are there any questions or comments about the motion? Treasurer Sherfy, do we have funds to cover this purchase? It's not your money, is it?
It's the people's money.
All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Excuse me, Mayor. I need to know if we will be financing it or buying it.
We have $19,000. Or do we need to move money around?
What's your recommendation, Don?
We recommend financing.
At 0% interest.
Ripian has 0% financing for 84 months.
Okay. Motion passes. Town Manager Miller, please move forward with the purchase process. Mr. Sherfy. No, I'm sorry, Town Manager Miller, right. Sustainable community designation renewal. Current designation expires February 19th, 2019. This was done in 2014. We had a grant writer, Valerie Mann, from down on the eastern shore, do the sustainable community application through the state and that basically, I won't say it was mandated, but it was highly recommended and required for us to be able to apply for grants such as the College Avenue/Blue Ridge. And it's good for five years. They've changed a few things. Department of Housing Community Development folks are willing to come out to our December town work session. There, there was three options. We could submit something on our own, we could get their input, or they could come out and meet with us and probably the planning commission as well and talk about future things that we want to see here in New Windsor for the sustainability community application. So I figured, let them come out and let them run with it and renew it. It may not get done by February 19th because there's a certain process, but they know that we have a letter of intent to, to update it.
Yeah, I, I actually prepared the letter of intent today, so I'll be sending that out tomorrow. That, that, that will help, as long as they have that on file, that, that can buy us some extra time with the deadline. And just to reiterate, we, we went, we got the designation first back, five years ago, back in February of 2014 and the renewal is February, middle of February in 2019. So they strongly recommended to get the letter of intent in and that way then they know we're working on it and there's more flexibility with that, with that deadline. So.
Thank you. Any other new business? Announcements, does the council have any announcements? The public have any announcements? Hughes, yes, go ahead.
I have one announcement. The New Windsor Heritage Committee is sponsoring a lecture series. The first one is going to be on Friday, November 16th at the Springdale Academy Cafeteria at 7:00 PM and there'll be a discussion of the history of the Brethren Center presented by someone who knows all about it. There will be light refreshments. It's free and it should be a very interesting thing to, to attend, so I encourage everybody to come on down. It's 7:00 PM, Friday, November 16th, Springdale Cafeteria.
Ziegler Building, 500 Main Street.
I just want to go on the record thanking Springdale for waiving the fee for renting that room and letting the Heritage Committee have the room for free, so we appreciate that.
Direct that right over there. Any announcements from the public? Few announcements, New Windsor Lions Club Community Blood Drive next Thursday, right here in this building, community meeting room from 2:00 to 7:30. You can go to redcross.org and schedule your life-saving donation. This will be my third annual Mayor on the Square Food Drive. It's where I will be at 201 Main Street on Friday, November 16th from 9:00 to 5:00 PM for food donations for the New Windsor Food Bank at St. Paul United Methodist Church. $1 will equal one pound. Last year, Mayor on the Square raised about two tons of food, so it serves the residents of Union Bridge in New Windsor. This year's goal is another two tons and my phrase for this year is want to make a difference, bring canned food and enjoy the experience. Christmas tree lighting, you heard earlier, Wednesday, December 5th, before our town council meeting at 6:00 PM at the Main Street Park. And New Windsor Fire Company Santa detail, go to WWF-D10.org for the schedule.
Later this week.
Later this week. Are there any, yeah, intentionally did that. Are there any residents' concerns? Any concerns from the residents? None? All right, at this time, we're going to have brief comments from the students. They can introduce themselves, talk about their school, what grade they're in, they're, you have 30 minutes, but we're going to cut it, we're going to cut it back, we're going to cut it back to about a minute or two. So Trinity, you can go first.
Okay.
Introduce any family members or anybody that's here. Say how nice your teacher is because you'll probably get an A tomorrow.
Hi, I'm Trinity Sherfy. My mom and my brother sit over there. I'm in eighth grade, I'm 14 years old and I'm in Ms. Borsak's social studies class. She is a really good social studies teacher. She's probably not, you know, showing favoritism, but she's one of my favorites that I've ever, you know, in any school I've ever gone to. I really enjoy her class and I'm really enjoying the subjects we're learning at the time. And that's all Riley had to say. Oh, I go to Northwest Middle. It's a good school. You should try it sometime.
Hi, I'm Taylor. I'm in eighth grade. I go to Northwest. This is my mom, my stepdad.
This is my, this is my teacher, Ms. Borsak.
I really enjoy her class because I like learning about like past history and what made this country what it is today. That's it.
I'm Francesca, my dad's in the back. I'm an eighth grade student at Northwest. Spencer right there is my best friend. Ms. Borsak's my social studies teacher and yeah.
I'm Spencer Conway. I go to Northwest Middle School. I'm in eighth grade. Ms. Borsak's also my teacher. You have a lot of fun in class. Yeah. Yeah, I'm in SGA, I'm the president of the SGA at our school. My mom's also in the town council, so, in, from Union Bridge. So my mom and dad are both here in the middle.
Who's your best friend?
My best friend's Francesca Walters.
Hello, my name is Michael. I'm in seventh grade. I go to Springdale and these two people are my parents.
You want a ride home, though? I'll say something nice.
This is my art teacher right over here, Ms. Davis. Yeah, so yeah. Yeah, I like it a lot because my other school is very crappy. Very bad, so, yeah.
My name is Davis. I go to Springdale. I'm 10 years old and I'm in the sixth grade. My mom is the art teacher of the school and I have four other sisters, so we, it's three, sorry.
Hi, I'm Heather and my mom's right there and my art teacher's right there and I go to Springdale and I really like it and yeah.
And your future plans are?
Be a Supreme Court Justice.
I go to Northwest Middle School and I'm in eighth grade and I'm very interested in government and I want to pursue a future somewhere in government and I just want to thank Ms. Borsak for this amazing opportunity because it'll look really good on a college application. And so I want to thank her for that and I'm also very active in my SGA and those two ladies up there, Francesca and Spencer, are part of my amazing board. I'm the vice president and I couldn't ask for a better president or a better secretary.
And again, thank you, Jennifer, for all your help. Any closing words?
Actually, can I ask the kids a question?
Sure.
So out of all the, all of, out of all the items you've heard tonight, which topic do you think is the most controversial topic for the town?
Ooh.
Do you think, do you guess at what would be maybe the most controversial topic?
The tractor.
No. No.
I would think it'd be the trash cans.
Trash bill.
Trash.
So I just wanted to see if you could take a point. Thank you all for...
The tractor.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I motion. Second.
Is there a second?
All those in favor of adjourn, say aye. Those who oppose, say no. Meaning is adjourned.